I plug allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we're missing Chet?
Yeah.
Okay. Chet's not here tonight. Janice, were you --
Could you appoint Paul because I have to step down on one issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paul, do you sit in for Chet, please?
Sure.
Okay, and next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes of the November 8th Planning Board meeting. Does anybody have any comments on the November 8th meeting?
No public comments.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Well, I'll do that next.
Okay.
I have a couple.
Yeah, I have two questions on December 8th.
November 8th.
November 8th, yeah. I guess, page 12, 13, I guess there was 12, so much discussion on Quack subdivision and some pages of discussions on it and motions, and I guess I question the appropriateness of this much discussion and motions on an item that's not even on, wasn't even on the agenda, and there was no public notice for it.
You go on page 13 of the November?
Yeah, 12, 13, basically, I didn't realize we could, like I know we're not supposed to do that much discussion on anything before us, it's not on our agenda, and therefore there's no public notice on it.
Oh, okay, now I see where you're at. Yeah. Well, it was a, I guess, a request that came into Clay about how we would like to see what was in the application, so we just made a, I don't, I don't, we didn't make any substantive, I don't think we made any substantive decisions, we made a decision to allow them to come in with an application that didn't have a full drainage plan, so we could get the application in front of us, so we could begin discussing that and work together on what that would look like. So whatever, whatever that plan is and how we go forward is now open to the public, it's going to be the application that we talk about tonight and hopefully accept and go on from there, so.
I guess my question is how much discussion should be done by this board, planning board, basically, on something that is not an agenda item and has public notice on it, that's all. I mean, we did make some decisions that I guess, I guess, whether they should be made without notice and comment.
Yeah, there were decisions in how to help the process move forward, but I, I just don't envision it as, see it as subverting the public process, because that application is now going to be before us, and all those things will be out in the open, and it was a matter of how to help the applicant to overcome the situation. The question that was before is basically was, should we go through this whole effort to design something just so the public knows if you haven't seen the meeting minutes? The question that was brought forth to us, that we made a decision on last time, was that Quack's application, the applicant wanted to put their application in, and one of the requirements of an application is they have a full drainage plan with calculations and a report, but there are different options on how to do that, and instead of, instead of going through all that effort to have us comment on it and change it, they wanted to come in with some options and discussions while I, after they filed the application. So we made a decision that that would be more appropriate, given the sensitivity of the issues out on this application, which will come forward, I don't want to go into the whole application before it gets presented to us. So our decision then was to allow that and to get into full discussion. This will go through, jumping ahead here, probably go to a technical review committee, and we'll have a lot of discussion on it. So I don't think we're, again, subverting the public process or having the public not have an opportunity to comment on that.
Well, I guess there should be some limit to how much discussion can be done on proposals before the board without being properly noticed in the agenda and also decisions made.
Well, I would agree with you, but I think it is being properly noticed, and we're going to get through that process now, but point taken. Do you want to change anything in this? I mean, I, and that's --
No, basically, I just get concerned that too much of this base start occurring on making decisions and discussions on items that are not on the agenda, and the public hasn't been notified that they're going to be discussed, which I understand is one of the reasons of notice and of public hearing on any item that is before us.
George, could I say something?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to read from the minutes. Actually, Clay asked us, he said that the Quacks had a question on which he wanted the Plating Board's guidance, so I think we were addressing it because Clay wanted our thoughts on this. It was not something that, I mean, we could have not even been in public session, and he could have asked for our guidance. So it wasn't really part of the application, he was just asking our opinion and advice. And we then did that, so I don't think it really had anything to do with the public need to be noticed.
I guess then, my other question is this last statement on page 12. Clay Mitchell stated that it was important to the applicants to get acceptance of the plan because they thought the board would create Forest Brook Watershed overlay district, which would seriously impair their ability to pursue the development. I don't think that should be our concern about whether, how quickly the application goes through, and we should go through normal processes.
Well, I agree with you. I think it's just a statement of fact that that was the applicant's opinion, didn't say we were -- point taken. That shouldn't, you're right, it shouldn't affect our decision how fast or slow we move, we do the right thing for this applica, for this application, I agree with you. Dan, you had some comments?
On page one, the last paragraph, the occupational therapy students were interested was, interested was because they were learning about, including the word "about" between learning and the health benefits of walking. On page seven, the last paragraph, Jen Jarvis answered that the Tiff had met last night and decided to recommend to the town council that that area get leveled to grade level and then paved, it should say, and then gravelled.
Hold, where are you again?
On the last paragraph, page seven.
Uh-huh.
The word "paved" should be "gravelled."
And then "gravelled" and "turned into a parking lot"?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On page eight.
Hold on, I'm going to make these, oh yeah, give them to Leo.
On page eight, the first paragraph, second sentence, he stated that the development might not be totally lost if there was a developer.
I'm slipping.
On the top of page nine, each of the town council members that sit on other committees submit, the word "and" should be excluded. Same page, third sentence down, second sen, third paragraph, second sentence, it should read, "The current move was to find a consultant who could," and I did say, and I don't know how you want to handle this, I did --
Is this the one that starts Jay Willetts?
Page nine, Jen Jar, the paragraph that starts Jen Jarvis.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
So the second sentence should say, "The current move was to find a consultant who could," and then I did say, "be held accountable," and who answered to the town administrator, but I was actually talking about the facilitator position for Phase Two. The one, the coordinator position for the NCDC would not answer to the town administrator. So I did say this, but I was referring to the wrong facilitator at the time, so I don't know how, if we can just add a, make a note in our minutes from, another best way to handle that.
Just put a period after "accountable."
You could just --
Could be held accountable to the --
Leave that to your discretion, but that's, when I said who answered to the town administrator, I was thinking of the Phase Two coordinator.
Period. Does anybody agree with that? I'll just put, "The current move was to find a consultant who be held accountable," period, and the rest of the sentence will be struck out.
Quiet.
Page 11, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, the paragraph that starts with Robert, "He attended the planning and zoning conference over the weekend, held by," scratch the second, "the held by," and that's it.
On page nine, on page 11, I have one last comment, I have only one comment. Paragraph says Clay Mitchell, Clay, the second sentence should say, "As to policy, he answers to the planning board, not as a policy." I think that's what, that's a good question, I'll rewrite it. I think you wanted to say, "As to policy, he answers to the planning board, not as a policy." Should we two?
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments? Have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Robert.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
All those opposed, stand. Thank you.
There you go. Okay, the first item that I now made the second. Public comments on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Open the public comment period. Anybody, yes ma'am? Could you come to the podium and state your name and address?
I'm just, I'm having trouble hearing the voices, and I was wondering if somebody could use their mic, it might help.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear better now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I opened up the public comment period, any public comments? If not, I'll close the public comment period at 7:15. Okay, first item on the agenda is the Sussex Group slash OmniPoint Holdings, Inc., public hearing for an application for site plan review at Nine Granite Street, Tax Map U3, Lot 175A, M2 Zone. Proposal is to install antennas and associated equipment cabinets for a wireless communication facility on an existing alternative tower structure. Do we have an applicant for Sussex tonight? Do we have a representative?
Representative T-Mobile.
Could you come to the podium, please, sir? Yeah, I'll ask them to repeat that. Could you repeat your name, please?
I'm Murphy.
Any of you with sir?
I'm representing T-Mobile.
Go ahead.
On behalf of, actually OmniPoint Holdings is the license holder, and the wholly owned subsidiary of T-Mobile, and we have submitted an application to install three panel antennas housed within two stealth chimneys on the roof of the building at Nine Granite Street. I had a pre-application meeting with Clay Mitchell, the town planner, and I had a meeting with the Heritage Advisory Committee. The Heritage Advisory Committee concurred that it was all right, they didn't find any problem with it. One chimney will extend 10 feet above the ridge of the roof, and the other only four feet above the roof, which is substantially below the 40 feet allowed under Section 5.07 D2C. The panel antennas are approximately 72 inches high, 12 inches wide, and 4 inches deep, and they'll be housed within a 30-inch by 30-inch stealth chimney constructed of fiberglass and designed to match the existing chimneys presently on the roof. One is in fact the extension of an existing chimney. One of the chimneys is no longer used, and that will be extended. The antennas will be connected by cables to three equipment cabinets, which will be located on a steel frame mounted to the wall near the southwest corner of the building. Because of topography and other natural features of the site, the cabinets will not be visible to the general public. Also mounted near one of the chimneys will be an E911 antenna, which is mandated by the FCC, and if anybody's not familiar with the E911 system, it's designed so that when someone makes an emergency call from a cellphone, they can be located within a very close distance to where they are. The installation requires only electric and telephone utilities, and once completed will only average one monthly visit by maintenance personnel. No water, no sewer, no other municipal services required. T-Mobile has sought to bring improved service into the central portion of Newmarket, including, you know, Main Street 108 and the surrounding area for several years. As a, as a sidelight, I used to manage property in Newmarket back in the 90s, and when I finally got a mobile phone, the only way I could use it was by driving down up onto the hill where the other apartments were and make a phone call and drive back. I managed the Woolly Apartments down on Main Street. So I think it's generally known that the service by most of the wireless carriers is not very good in the center of town. It was determined through radio frequency analysis that to provide the desired coverage in the area of the Nine Granite Street site would fulfill those requirements, and it also, because of the installation, minimizes the visual impact within the town. We believe the proposed installation reflects the spirit and intent of the Newmarket zoning ordinance and meets the requirements of Section 507 for approval, and we would hope that the planning board would approve our site plan application. I have, and I don't know whether you want to see this, would you like the audience to see it?
Of both.
You've all had a copy of this.
Yep.
This is the building here, Granite Street being out here. The southerly portion of the building is the newer section of the building that was built around 1980. The antenna will be mounted on a chimney back in that section of the building. The other one, this is the existing chimney on the front corner of the building, and it shows a little better. That's kind of an aerial view, this is the elevation, this being the southwest side of the building. The equipment cabinets located, they're actually mounted on a steel frame, so they don't touch the ground at all, and coax cables run up the side of the building, again, in a cable tray that will be painted to match the brick. This is the antenna on the back corner of the building, this is the one on the front corner of the building. The front elevation, which is the north side, again, this is the older section of the building with the chimney on the front corner. The new chimney, or the extension on the chimney actually will only be about four feet above the ridge line of the roof. The one on the rear will be 10 feet above the ridge line of the roof. If you have any questions of us, I also have with me Kamal Johari, the RF engineer for T-Mobile, who can answer any questions that I can't, hopefully.
Have a motion to accept this is complete?
Make a motion to accept the application is complete.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, accepted. Application's accepted. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Leo.
Are you a locator at the Plains also, T-Mobile?
We're located out at the DPW facility.
Okay.
Yes.
The, can this proposal support other co-locations?
No, in a situation like this, you know, it's just designed for, for T-Mobile to locate on their --
Oh, it's not going to be available?
It's not like building a tower where you would have space for additional carriers.
Looking at the coverage there, it leaves to be, leaves to be quite a bit of gaps between this location and the Public Works Garage location. Could that be covered if they were not a little bit further, closer towards what is allowed by the ordinance?
In height on the building? Let me ask Kamal to answer that, because he knows more about the coverage than I do.
Could you repeat your question, Leo, so I understood it?
The question was that if you look on page, whatever, on the existing and proposed coverage.
Right.
You, you see the coverage by the Public Works Tower, and the first page shows no coverage downtown area.
Right.
With this proposal, there is some coverage down the downtown area, but it doesn't connect with the Public Works Garage, and there's still areas in town, Hershey Lane, Cushing, whatever, that aren't covered, and I was wondering if, I mean, they are way below what is allowed by our ordinance as far as height, I think it's 40 some odd feet above the existing, and the question is if, could they have gone up another 10 feet and closed, gotten more coverage on it? That's the question.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Kamal Johari. I'm the radio frequency engineer responsible for the design of this proposed facility. To answer your questions, the proposed installation is already located at a significant height, it's on top of a hill, so I think even an additional 10 feet, it would, will not help that much in terms of extending the coverage to the north and also to the south.
About 20 feet.
20 feet, it would probably be a question of how odd the chimney will look like, 20 feet taller than --
I'm not talking about the looks, I'm just talking about whether the coverage would increase to give us more coverage in these large white areas here.
Yeah, 20 feet will --
So it's no coverage.
Yes, 20 feet will, will make the difference in coverage.
And you'd still be way below what our ordinance allows?
Yes, because your ordinance allows 40 feet.
Right, yeah. I guess that's the question is, is if you're going to go, whether it doesn't make sense to go a little higher and give more coverage, because there's a lot of white areas here that are not being covered, and everyone knows Newmarket is terrible on cellphone coverage, and I guess the question is, why did you stop at this very low extension rather than go up where you could possibly get considerably more coverage?
Well, I think, you know, we probably set at that height partially because it would meet the coverage objective that Kamal and T-Mobile was trying to reach for that particular site. Also, in keeping with the, sort of historic look to the building, to extend chimneys that high above it, probably would have met with objections from some people, like maybe the Heritage Advisory Committee, and also the landlord might not have been willing to allow us to do that because of the look of the building.
But you didn't check that out?
Nope.
Okay.
The, the main goal for this proposed facility is to provide coverage to the downtown area. The location itself is possibly the best location for me, because it's right where I want to provide coverage to, and, and that's what is providing downtown area along Route 152 and also 108.
108.
108, the intersection of 108, and that's what you see in the RF plots that I showed you, that I provided.
I did have conversations, obviously, with the landlord in regards to the chimneys, and we did, in fact, revise the plan from what the original was. The original was to have another 10-foot chimney on the front section of the newer portion of the building, and the landlord objected to that, because he didn't want to, you know, really change the, the nature of the building.
The other question, I guess, is on your existing locations, you have the Public Works Tower, and you have one in Newfields. Isn't there a location at the Water Tower on Great Hill, Sprint has?
That's a Sprint location, yes.
So basically, all you're saying is you have required said locations that you have, not other locations that other carriers might have.
Right.
I think the intent of the ordinance was to see what all the locations were, so that there could be an evaluation as to whether we might cut down on the amount of locations if more co-locations were available. I guess that's the --
So is your question, Leo, to ask, that they didn't look to see if they could co-locate on the Water Tower?
Yeah, I guess that's, we should, when we have an application like this, we should be given the location of all existing towers, so that we could then make a decision as to whether, well, there's this other tower right next to the one you're proposing, we could require, basically, investigate a co-location on an existing tower that would reduce the amount of towers that would be in town, and that's one of the, I was on the board when this ordinance was put together back in 97, and that was one of the reasons, you know, why, looking at all the other ordinance that were around, this was put in so that the board could look at other possible towers in the area they might co-locate to without having to put another separate tower of their own. That's one of the reasons of the, why this was put in the ordinance, so we would have that, and I guess my opinion is you're supposed to put all locations in the area, not just the ones that you have.
Did --
This is not a tower.
That's true, it's not a tower, but it's another antenna, so I mean, the question would be --
It's an alternative tower structure, it's defined specifically in the ordinance. And it, the, the site plan regs only require the inventory if a new tower is proposed, not an alternative tower structure.
Okay, that's the clarification we needed.
Here's on page one, Section 8, three antennas at the height of 56 feet, 56 feet of sea level.
Well, that's included, that's the, above ground level.
Above the ground level.
Above ground level.
Next to, okay, if I'm not, no, they refer to some baseline.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for any public comments on the, on this application. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any further discussion by the board? Any concerns that Leo brought up? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application for site plan review at Nine Granite Street, Tax Map U3.
Approve.
Approve. Approve the application at Nine Grant Street, Tax Map U3, Lot 175A, M2 Zone.
Have a second?
I have a second.
Robert B. Jeter. No discussion, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed.
Thank you.
Approved. Next item on the agenda is Charles and Roseanne Quacks, public hearing for an application Next item on the agenda is Charles and Roseanne Quacks, public hearing for an application for subdivision at 332 Wadley Falls Road, tax map five, lots 83 and 84, R1 zone. The application is for a 19-lot open space development off Route 152. Subdivision would be accessed via proposed 3,000-foot town road. The lots would be serviced by individual wells and a combination of individual and shared septic systems. The driving range would be closed and the lights removed. Over 50% of the parcel would be preserved as open space. 16 acres of open space along Follet's Brook will be offered to the town to merge with other land owned by the town. The 15 acres of open space in the area now used as a driving range is being reviewed by town officials to determine its best use. Good evening, Mr. Sett.
Good evening.
Yes, Janice Rosa has stepped, recused herself as being a Nevada.
Good evening, my name is Bill Doucette from Doucette Survey. I'm here representing Chadburn Communities LLC for the proposed Haley Oaks subdivision. It is on land owned by Charles and Roseanne Quacks. Been before this board since August under design review. After the August hearing, there was a scheduled sidewalk. For September, we revised the design based on comments heard at the sidewalk and discussed the project further. Since then, we've been putting the design together for full submission, which has been submitted. We believe the application to be complete. We did include a, what we term a temporary waiver request on the drainage study. Drainage has been closely reviewed, as evidenced in your application by the drainage summary, multiple-page summary by Apple Door Engineering. There's also a roadway summary in the application as well. The parcel is located on Route 152. It's about 58 acres in size, and the proposal before you this evening is for a 19-lot subdivision. Yep, we believe the application completes, so if the board's going to take jurisdiction, we can go into as whatever detail that you would like to this evening.
Yeah, I got a few questions on this. If you read our, this application requires two separate approvals. One is in the open space subdivision, now zoning regulations 60. It's the applicant must receive a special use permit from the planning board. The planning board, in order to approve a special use permit, must find that the open space design meets all the requirements in Section 602 to 614 of zoning regulations. The planning board cannot deviate away from any requirements of this zoning ordinance. The second approval is required for open space subdivision approval. The planning board can alter away from any subdivision requirement that the planning board desires. Both of these approvals require public notice, and public hearings, and requirements and regulations of approval are very different. In Section 607 of the zoning ordinance, which deals with application procedure, it states that special use applications shall be joined with the application for subdivision approval in the interest of procedural ease. This is a zoning requirement and cannot be waived by the planning board. At the September 13th planning board meeting, pages three and four, this was asked by the applicant, Clay Mitchell suggested, and they would, the next step would include a formal subdivision application and a special use permit. Bill Doucette stated they would have that for the next meeting. While we do have the subdivision request, but we do not have the special use permit requests, one they said they would supply, and one that our zoning regulations require us. I guess I have a problem as to whether the application is complete if the, our zoning regulations have not been met. That's one of the issues I have with it. The second issue I have is in regards to the survey on page three of the application. I'm chair of Follet's Brook Restoration Committee, and one of our first tasks was to find what properties the town owned along Follet's Brook. We obtained all of these we could find, which related to these properties, and there was still some confusion at the extent of the property owned by the town. Earlier in the spring of 2005, I talked to Bill Doucette and Al Dixon about the possibility of Doucette surveying Follet's Brook property while he was doing Russo and Pelzah properties, and I thought this was agreed on. Today, in talking out with Bill, I found out that Al, since that time, had told him to hold off on doing the survey. One of the deeds of interest, which I hope would have been resolved by this new survey, is the April 1st, 1918 deed by which the Newmarket Water Works bought a piece of property from George and Mary Mathis. This is a significant part of the proposal before us, between the two walls to the right of the application. The, I guess the conditions that a 1918 deed are calls for a rectangular, four-sided piece, 100 feet wide in the length of the property, i.e.
Oh, before you go any further, are the two issues, you said you had two issues?
Yeah, that's the two issues. One of the issues.
All right, well, stop, stop, stop.
Okay.
Are they related?
They are related to acceptance of the application is complete.
That's okay, but are they related to each other? They don't appear to be.
No, not.
Okay, then let's.
Okay.
Do you have much more on the survey one? Because I wanted, I wanted to see if we can discuss them individually before we get lost losing one.
I guess I was going to talk about the survey and what it shows in relation to the maps that are shown to us, which seems to be some disparity between what the deed says was conveyed to the town in Newmarket and what the survey map shows, the boundaries on the plan submitted to us.
That seems like it might take a little bit, so let's start with the first one. You're saying that, I might have to read it, what did you say?
Session 607 of the zoning regulations. Application procedure. Applications for special use permits for an open space design development shall be made in accordance with the procedures set forth in the relevant sections of subdivision regulations in my planning board. These applications shall be joined with an application for subdivision approval in the interest of procedural ease. I guess that, that is a zoning regulation, and I question, well, basically, they stated that they would do that, and it has not done that, and I question whether they're in compliance with 607 of the zoning regulations.
The, I thought the, my impression was the whole application was for an open space subdivision, it was an in total application, that there were not two separate applications per se.
I think zoning regulations state that there will be a special use application according to the zoning regulations, and there's also a subdivision application that is completely different, basically.